Hey everyone, thanks for coming. So it's 5:03. This is the first time I think we've started late in Steve State's career. And that's because of the party for him, so he doesn't really want to get started. So I'm Jeannie Carpenter. I'm your village president-elect. Thank you for voting for me. Standing next to a great fellow here. First encouraged me to run. I think I'm... This might come up later, but I first approached him at... We go to the same church. And I said, "You know, I'd like to get involved in the community. Like, what would it take for it to get appointed to a committee or something?" This was seven years ago. And he said, "Well, you should just run for village board." I'm like, "What?" And so, I did. So, thank you all for coming here tonight. So for the first, like, 25 minutes here, we are just gonna... It's gonna be informal. We have some cake in the back. I'd offer... Or I'd encourage you to maybe mingle around, talk with Steve. We'll get the meeting started at 5:30. But I think... Do you want to say a few words right now?
I thought I'd wait till the end of this, alright? I'll wait until the end if that's okay.
Alright, so...
He's taking over right now.
That's why you're in the mic.
Yeah, so I guess the reception has begun. So eat, drink, be merry. Right?
Thank you.
Phil? Doing well, how are you?
Hey Phil.
I do, man. You know, it comes and goes. I think I've had this one now for...
Sometimes you have it when you're here and sometimes you don't.
Yeah, this one's been here for probably...
Jerry Lomel gets a month or so.
Well, last week I was on a canoe... The week before last I was on a canoe trip.
Oh my gosh.
And, uh... And it was getting real long.
My brother-in-law thinks...
Like what you got. There's a bunch of them. I kind of tripped it.
Takes me back.
You want the food? That's what I came for.
So we got together when I was there. But I got some of your cheese breads and cheese and breakfast. And my other husband was like...
Well, yeah, the meeting starts by Thursday.
Snacks and...
This was a whitewater trip. Southern Appalachians. The water was kind of questionable in a lot of places. So we were on the Tellico River for four days. Big South Fork, the Cumberland for some of the... We were hoping to be able to have the old vents and rainwater sheds, but it just wasn't enough. It was good. So what do they have?
There's cake and chips and popcorn. And ice cream. And those are...
Those are all his favorite?
Yeah, yes.
Did you see there was a big article about Stephon Curran? He's the great basketball player for the Lakers. Apparently his thing is to eat a ton of popcorn as part of his pre-game routine. How are you? Yeah, he like chows on the popcorn before he shoots. And then he does the catch on. And then he does after.
I would think that that was just...
He must have...
Just rip your head off.
Probably how he deals with nerves.
He has his nerves, something to work on.
I mean, I have to keep going. And I have something to deal with nerves or with the nerves. What you're seeing, right? What do you have to deal with the nerves?
Oh yeah.
Is it an old name?
Yes.
Oh, did you guys see there was fire? I saw like a huge amount of smoke driving in on... I got on 14. I'm looking through the rearview mirror.
There may have been a control nerd going on.
Oh, there was a lot of smoke.
A lot of the... They seemed like the... There was probably a control nerd went in there. Because it wasn't windy today, but there was nice weather. So it's good day to do that.
Okay, control nerd.
Good. Did my neighbors want to buy it? Um... They were looking... They found a different house. They moved a couple of years. But I think there's... There was a couple for sale in our subdivision. The one needs a lot of work that's right by the park. And the other one, I think it actually sold. It was actually... It's right across the street from Tara, the auditor. Yeah, she lives in my neighborhood now. It was the one right across the street from her that was for sale.
Do you want their info?
So she's the one who gets the question? I saw her. Yes, yes.
So did you see your port to be in some of these places?
Apparently they have some...
I didn't request a call to him. Please try to...
So...
He's gonna...
He said he was... Sorry, I... I had a... I had a... I had a...
America issues. I think I'm about to get out of here.
When I got there. Uh... This is where we... Yeah, that's where we... Some of the... We're...
I just... I already talked about it. It's like a basic... Well, for us... So... So... Unless somebody showed me some reason not to be in it. I don't know why we wouldn't do that.
Just a question.
Was it... Did you know that we were asking? Well, that's a definition. So if I'm a kid, you'd be like... It's like such a... No, I think that's... So now it's like... Let's say...
Yes. Yeah.
I wonder... I was... My good... So... June, I think he says I want to be... What do I do? What is that for me?
And I had some words for her. I mean, it's... Well, they're better ones. Which is...
I can hear some... I tell him, Tim. I'm on the line. He's a lawyer. Cool. I have... Tell him what they're doing. Wonderful. You know... I see me... I'm trying to... Actually, can I... Yeah.
It's pretty much a... 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 It's pretty much a...
Oh, okay. It's good to know the person.
And I was... It's not really different. Also, it's... Every day, they bring... As I would say...
And I... You know, I don't want to talk so much. I can sign those. But it's like... We're doing... I don't know. 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 It was actually... It's right across the street from Tara, the auditor. Yeah, she lives in my neighborhood now. It was the one right across the street from her that was for sale.
Oh, sure.
Do you want their info?
Yeah.
So here's kind of... Does it want to deal with that? You want us to...
Well, yes. Well, it's... Look, so... It's... It's...
So he's the one who gets the question? He...
I saw her. Yes. Yes.
So did you see your port to be in some of these places?
Apparently, it doesn't have... Apparently, they have some of the shelves.
I didn't request a call to him. Please try to... It's kind of... 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 So he's the one who gets the question? He...
I saw her. Yes, yes. We feel like it's a good question.
I mean... So did you see your port to be in some of these places?
Apparently, it doesn't have... Apparently, they have some of the shelves.
I didn't request a call to him. Please try to... It's kind of... 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 I didn't request a call to him. Please try to... It's kind of... 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 I just... I already talked about it. It's like a basic... Well, for us... So... 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 Unless somebody showed me some reason not to be in it. I don't know why we wouldn't do that. I mean... Was it... Did you know that we were asking? Like, did you know that we were asking? Oh, well, that's a definition. So if I'm a kid, you'd be like... It's like such a... No, I think that's... Yes. Then I would... I would... I would... I would... I would... Oh, so now it's like... I would say... I would... 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 Yes. Then I would... 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 So now it's like... I would say... I would... I would... I would... I would... Yes. I would... 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 What do I do? What is that for me? What is that for me? I would... 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 I would tell him, Tim. I'm on the line. He's just calling him on the line. He's a lawyer. Cool. I have... Really tell him what they're doing. Wonderful. You know... I see me... I'm trying to... I shoot him. I'm trying to... I'm trying to... I'm trying to... I shoot him. I'm trying to... 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 Oh, okay.
I didn't want to see it back there.
Well, it's good to know the person.
And I was... It's not really different. Also, it's... It's every day... They bring... As I would say... It's... 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 It's...
And I... You know, I don't want to talk so much. I can sign those. But it's like... I'm just... 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 I don't know what it is. It's a guy that loses it. Just... I'm 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 just... And that just makes me... I'm just... I'm just... I'm just... Of course, the lawyer was a lot of... I'm just... 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 I mean, I just didn't realize it's not hard to meet. I'm just... 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 So, we just... So... 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 So...
I hope we... I hope we... Yeah, I got you. No, it's a broadside. Yeah, I think I'll speak that question. Yeah. We're on the right track.
I think I'm... I mean, yeah, I... It's just... I'm sorry. Okay, we need to get him on the line.
He decided to let me. Yeah. So... Maybe she'll turn and go from here.
I think it's going well. It's quite... It's... And then...
Definitely. I was... I was... There you go. So... But I just... But I just... But I just... But I just... But I just...
It feels good to everybody get along. It's awesome. It's kind of a process. It's a beautiful place. So how many of yous have... I'm just... Because it's... What is the situation based on the time? Because I feel like... We just... It was just the other side. It was... 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 There you go.
So... But I just... But I just... But I just... But I just...
It feels good to everybody get along. It's awesome. It's kind of a process. It's a beautiful place. So how many of yous have... I'm just... Because it's... What is the situation based on the time? Because I feel like... We just... It was just the other side. It was... 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 It was just the other side. It was... 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 Good. I'm busy. My, um... My dog, like, kind of...
It's going great, where are you going?
Can you check the fridge?
I am gonna go check the fridge, cuz I need something to eat.
And I've been whining about it every time.
Better jump on that bus.
Well, first I have to get accepted.
Oh, that's right.
I gotta take the G-Man.
Not the MCAT, G-Man.
Yeah.
I know it's not the MCAT, that's the doctor.
The M-CAT, yeah. The G-Man is kicking my ass.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, um, it's been really amazing. The, the experience of, uh, of going through this prep work has been really, really amazing. Yeah. It's been a long time. I pretty much, I mean, I feel like I've pretty much lived ahead of the curve and if I've had any problems at all is because the people around me didn't see where the train was going.
Oh.
And so they didn't get me, but then a couple of years later they got me, but then I was already a couple, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I, because I just enjoy reading leadership development books.
Yeah.
But I have nothing to do, that's what I do. That's what I do, that's what I am.
Yeah.
So I'm applying and implementing these things that other people aren't reading even though they know that they should be. So, you know, we're busy.
Right.
And for many people it's not a passion.
Yeah.
So to actually get in and be just baffled is... Initially it was extremely stressful, but now I'm like, I've been doing this for, like eight months.
Oh, really?
I've been athletes, uh, underperform on three tests. Oh. That's true.
It's not lying, it's just pretty great. If you wanna learn, just go.
No. I like, I like where you're going. Um, I try to figure out, I always try to frame things.
He was, he was telling me.
But yet I think, I think that I, I'm still kind of wrestling with this idea that I can do better. And so when I go in and I don't do well, it becomes a self-telling process. So I'm trying to kind of try to flip that around.
All right, everybody. So, if you all wanna get your cake and ice cream and take a seat, we are gonna get started here in three minutes with our regular board meeting and we like to start on time. So President State would like to call us to order in about three minutes.
I appreciate that about you. I do. And I need to surround myself with more people that are, that catch me quick before I get working on myself and they gotta pull me up from the basement. Find my bootstraps. It's the same thing. Um, I have had, I've got quite a few years of period B and A as well, so.
So Jeff, the one thing that's, remember, remember happens all, always.
What's that? Oh, yeah, yeah. I was just explaining how the G-Mans just be kind of kicking me all around the desk.
You'll, you'll get it.
Today I had to try to figure out what A, ampersand B equals X squared plus C N.
Okay, so, can you hear me back there?
How does the alphabet equal anything?
Are we on, Dan?
Yeah, you're on.
Okay, now we can, okay. So before the meeting starts, I just have a few quick comments to make as I ramp things up here. I first came on the board in 2003 for four years as a trustee and then I was elected village president in 2007. Um, and I'm wrapping things up tonight. What, what happened was pretty straightforward for quite a while, for a few months, and then we had a flood in 2007 and, uh, that was when things really kind of got heated up and we've dealt with stormwater for a month since then, but we have made, uh, a lot of progress. So as I look back on the, the 12 years as village president, uh, I've been blessed with many good trustees to work with. Uh, they sit here, they discuss things, uh, they can be intense about what they do, but they respect each other and when we vote, uh, there may be disagreements, but people leave and they're still friends and that's been great. So thanks to all the trustees here tonight, plus all the ones that have served in the past. Uh, I would also say this has been a great community in which to be an elected official. Uh, it's very progressive and I think that fits what our board does. Uh, residents have been very supportive and respectful and I appreciate that. Someone asked me about my accomplishments and a lot has gotten done in 12 years. And my response was, I think I might be able to, uh, put my stamp on a couple of things and that would be all. And that would be the Rotary Bike Trail. Those initial votes were all four to three and I worked hard to, uh, move that process along and that did happen and, you know, the trail got put in. Now it's detoured right now with flooding, but we're in the process of making good progress on that also, so that would be good. Uh, the other thing that, that I'm proud of, that I put my stamp on was, uh, some ordinances regarding sale of liquor as well as liquor license, um, requirements. That is something that also spread to many other communities. After we did those things, I was asked to speak in 13 other communities about what had happened. So, uh, there were some things that happened there that were important. So lots of other things got done and the point I want to make about that is that that was a team effort. Uh, that was a team effort with the, the board that was elected at that time, our consultants and our staff. And when I think of the word "community," I think of the last five letters of unity, uh, doing things together. And I think that's been symbolic of what has happened here with all the staff I've worked with over the years, plus the ones that are still, still involved. Uh, I'm very indebted to our staff and consultants. Uh, they've made this fun, they've been friends, uh, and they've been, been great to work with and done a great job. And they comprise an effective team. So I would like to, uh, quickly recognize them. At the far end we have Je- Jennifer Ender's Way at the library, so she does a great job with working toward the new library. Rachel Brichtner at the senior center, again, uh, very effective programs there. Jeff Rowe is our director of public works. Uh, Jeff is the one that gives me a very bad time and I noticed he took my gavel tonight, so I can't conch on tonight. Hopefully that shows back up pretty soon.
Actually, actually, I think I have it.
Yeah, I know you do. Thank you very much. So I really shouldn't say this about Jeff, but you know, and since he's done this, just gonna say that when we hired Jeff as director of public works, he was the only candidate. We had no choice. I'm kidding about that. Uh, next to Jeff, we have, uh, police chief Brian Yule. Uh, Brian stepped in and has done a very nice job with our police department. Uh, Lisa Nivenska, our financial advisor, uh, does a great job, uh, goes about it very quietly. Uh, she does give me a, a bad time, usually quietly, about being a Hawkeye fan. And that's not been easy because it seemed like Iowa never beats Wisconsin anymore since Lisa's been here. Uh, and, uh, Mike Reese, our, uh, village administrator. Every good team has an effective leader and I've been very impressed with what Mike does all the time I've been village president. And Peggy Hague, who sits here as our clerk and keeps me in line during meetings and lets me know if I get out of order with Robert's Rules of Order. Uh, consultants that are here, Matt Dregney, our attorney, Matt has been here pretty much all the time I've been on the board. Uh, Matt does a great job and, and works well with our team of, uh, uh, directors and has also become a real good friend through this process. I'd also mention, uh, Jason Letha, who's not here, I don't believe, but he's our, an engineer from Rooker and Milky, has been good to work with also. And my wife is tucked back there in the corner someplace and I'd like to thank her. You know, she's never jumped for joy when I've chosen to run, but she's always been supportive and I appreciate that very much. So, uh, thanks for that. She also made cases that give me good advice, uh, when I come home frustrated or something or trying to figure things out. And, uh, and talking with it just, it's just been good to get another, another perspective. So, uh, just a couple of things for the board going forward. Obviously you can do what you want cuz I'm not gonna be around. Uh, I hope that pedestrian bike paths are a priority and we continue to work in that area. And there's also a lot going on, uh, in the county and statewide with, uh, more use of renewable energy sources. And I hope that the board, uh, will be involved in that also. So that's all I have. Uh, thanks to everyone that's here, thanks to those that work with us and me that aren't here. And thanks to the residents for, uh, being supportive and respectful and helpful. So with that, I will call the meeting to order and request roll call, please. I'm leery of everything Jeff does. And justifiably so.
Staten.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Glish.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Boudreau.
Here.
Bolig.
Here.
Thank you. So item three, uh, discussion and possible action as a proclamation honoring President Steve Staten on the occasion of his retirement from the village board. So what we do with, with things like this is people take turns reading it. Since this is about me, I'm not gonna read it, I'm gonna pass it to Jerry. Each person kind of takes a line, so it's all yours to start, Jerry.
Thank you. Whereas President Steve Staten began serving the residents of the Village of Oregon as a village trustee on April 15th, 2003, and has served as village president since April 17th, 2007. And...
Whereas President Staten has always kept the welfare of the village residents first and foremost in mind when making decisions during his years of dedicated service on the village board. And...
Whereas throughout his service, President Staten worked closely on many significant projects with village trustees and staff. And...
Whereas village administrator Michael Grace will especially miss the leadership and guidance President Staten has provided to him during his years as village president. And...
Whereas President Staten will be greatly missed by village trustees, village staff and community members.
Now therefore be it resolved that we, the trustees of the Oregon Village Board, take this opportunity to express our sincere and grateful appreciation to President Staten and wish him the best of luck and good health in retirement. This is passed by the village board and signed by all village board members on this 15th day of April 2019.
Thank you very much. Now we do still have to vote on that and I have to say, I'm, hopefully it passes. So any motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Okay, yeah.
Got the mulim on there, Dan?
Okay.
I'm Steve Staten, I'm running for village president again. I've been on the board for 10 years, since I was a village president. Uh, two years ago I decided I would not run again.
I'm Steve Staten, I'm running for village president again. I've been on the board for 10 years, since I was a village president. Two years ago I decided I would not run again, uh, but I am.
So my, my first memory of Steve as village president was his very first meeting where he said that we were going to, uh, look at issues as a community versus a village and I think he's practiced that since he's been village president for the last 12 years. Uh, we've looked at stormwater issues together and things like that and I think he's been a, shown great leadership as a village person. Thanks.
All right, well, first of all, congratulations Steve on, uh, your retirement from the village board. You've had a great run. It's been a phenomenal, uh, opportunity working for you. I love working with senior citizens. I think it's always nice to be able to work with those people who are so much older than you are and help them through life in their, in their latter years. No, seriously Steve, uh, you've been phenomenal to work with. It's been an honor to work with you and, uh, we just wish you the best and hope to see you all the time. Just don't call me and complain all the time.
Hey, Steve Staten, I just wanted to say congratulations. 12 years, I think that's, that's how funny, isn't it? But you know one thing, I will call you the president today instead of the vice president. I finally figured it out, now you're leaving. What are we gonna do?
I just remember every time I met Steve and it, from the first time I went with him to interacting with him, he was always a friendly face and he was always on our side and looking at how to help. And that's gonna be the biggest thing I remember about him, is always having someone there who's willing to help with what we needed to do. So, we'll miss you, Steve.
Hey Steve, Paul Harms here, Sleeping Sweets, we miss ya. Wish you were here today. Uh, you were, you were implementing, and as far as you implementing the hotel and getting here in Oregon and you did so much for the community and you just, I just wanna say thank you. We appreciate everything you've done and I just appreciate you being a mentor to me as well and, you know, my time in Oregon and growing up here and relationship with my family and it means a lot to us. And, uh, we're looking forward to, to continue that relationship and just wanna say thank you and appreciate everything and just enjoying retirement and we'll miss you, that's for sure. Thanks, Steve.
My best memory of Steve Staten is I approached him at the church that we go to, this is probably seven years ago, and I asked him, you know, what would it take to, for me to be like, um, like to be appointed to a, um, like a committee or commission cuz I'm interested in serving the, the community? And he says to me, why don't you just run for village board, you'd be great? And that had never occurred to me before. So now, um, seven years later, I just got elected village president. So thank you Steve for encouraging people to serve their communities and making people like me believe that we can do it. Congratulations.
Just like Steve.
No more night meetings.
I wish I was retired.
I wish I was retired too.
I'd like to sleep in in the morning.
No more ribbon cuttings.
I'm tired all the time.
Take lots of bicycle rides.
Bye, Steve.
Bye, Steve.
Thank you Steve for being such a good friend of the senior center. Bye.
So, hey Steve, this is Mary. Congratulations on your soon-to-be retirement from the village board. Um, as a member of the library staff, I really appreciated how you've backed the library project. And this would be appropriate place to sit with a poster that we did for you several years ago. Um, once again, congratulations and your support has been very much appreciated. Best wishes for the future for you and Ann.
Hey Steve, just wanna wish you best wishes in retirement. Uh, I wanna say it's been a pleasure working with you, um, and you have been an inspiration to me. Very thankful for the opportunities that you've provided for me. And I also wanted to let you know that in retirement, if you ever need anything, I will always have a room for you here.
Thanks, everyone. I appreciate that being put together. It was very meaningful and fun to see, so.
Stevie, that was put together by OCA Media, by the way.
Okay, well that speaks to the quality of it, so that's good, great. Okay, item four, uh, presentation of proclamation for President Staten by Dane County Executive Joe Parisi. Welcome, Joe. It's nice to have you here. Yeah.
Well, good evening, everyone. Oh, am I on?
It's on.
It's on? Okay, great. Well, thank you for allowing me a couple of minutes to come and, um, recognize, nice Steve. As you know, there are 60 and a half, if you count Edgerton coming over the border, um, cities, towns and villages in Dane County. And every year there is a churn of mayors, village presidents, town board chairs. But it isn't often, in fact, since I've been county executive, that, that we recognize, um, someone who's moving on. But I think it's important, um, that folks in Oregon know that in addition to everyone in Oregon knowing what a great job Steve has done and all of his accomplishments, and as importantly, the manner in which he achieves things with dignity and respect, um, and showing that you can work with people and get things done in a, in, frankly with class, Steve, as you have. Um, that Steve is known throughout the county, um, and he's really a role model and, and, and a model of how someone can be when they're doing this for all, for the right reason. So if I could have just two minutes, I, I'd, I'd like to be able to, um, read this proclamation. Um, one of the things that I get to do as county executive is proclaim things. I even get to proclaim days, um, and name them after certain people. Not to be a spoiler alert, but I'm just gonna get into this. Um, whereas April 15th, 2019 marks the last board meeting for village president Steve Staten after 12 years as president and four as a trustee. And whereas Steve retires from public service for a second time after an exemplary career in the Oregon School District for 32 years, where he served as principal at Oregon Middle School and also as a part-time alcohol and drug resource counselor. And whereas with his background, Steve worked to change the culture of drinking in the village and his leadership led to the enactment of a social host ordinance in 2012. And whereas Steve continued that culture change with a focus on changing the liquor license process in the village, which made him a coveted speaker to other officials throughout Dane County on the success he had in Oregon. And whereas his greatest accomplishment, if you can name just one, was the improvement of the village's stormwater management system following flooding in 2007. And whereas more accomplishments by Steve include improving Oregon's downtown infrastructure in 2008 and 2009 and leading an effort to build a three-mile bike trail from the Alpine Business Park to Fish Hatchery Road that finally opened after many years of planning and development in 2015. And whereas Steve has said, "You can't just stop working and be done." And serving as village president gave him a sense of purpose and fulfillment helping the community. And whereas Steve hopefully will stay retired long enough the second time so that he and his wife Ann can travel the country and world and spend more time with their family, now therefore be it resolved that I, Joe Parisi, Dane County Executive, on behalf of the citizens of Dane County, do hereby proclaim April 15th, 2019 as Steve Staten Day in Dane County and wish him many years of travel and relaxation in his retirement and thank him on behalf of the community for all of his outstanding work.
Thanks, Joe.
And I apologize, you didn't know the entire day that it was your day. There's still a few hours to say.
Well, it still feels good, so thank you. Your kind words mean a lot to me, Joe. County's been great to work with, uh, Mr. Parisi has helped, helped us on a lot of things and, and it's been a great relationship, so it's been good.
You've been a great partner.
Appreciate it. Yeah, good. Thank you.
So are we going on to the video now? Okay, great. Well, yeah, so I will only talk a couple of minutes and I'll let the video, cuz I know you have a lot going on tonight, talk for itself. Um, one of the things we try to do in county government, because we're involved in so many different areas, is try to bite off little chunks and, in issue areas and go talk to folks about them. Um, one of the things that we've been doing this year, we made about a 10-minute video that talks about a lot of the environmental conservation work that we've been doing, the lakes cleanup, renewable energy, and a really exciting project that we have going on at our landfill, which on, on, on the surface would sound really boring, right? We're gonna come and talk about a landfill? But just to give you the, the, the minute and a half version, basically, our landfill, um, as you know, landfills, the rotting trash generates methane gas. Most landfills flare that off as a waste product because it's dangerous, landfills can explode. For over 20 years, we've been burning that gas and generating renewable electricity with it, um, generating up to a million dollars of revenue for Dane County taxpayers annually. Um, with the changing economics of renewable energy, with solar and wind becoming so inexpensive, particularly over the last decade, uh, the utilities are really no longer, um, interested in paying us what we would need to make that continue to work at the landfill, burning the landfill gas. So what we did, working with our staff, who are some pretty incredible folks at the landfill, um, have come up with a process by which we are going to convert from, from burning our methane to generate, to generate electricity to taking it and compressing it and injecting it directly into an interstate natural gas pipeline that just happens literally to run through the property at the landfill. And that will be compressed natural gas and we've signed a contract with QuickTrip, um, who is beginning to sell compressed natural gas. So this is bio-natural gas made from rotting trash, um, that's going to be fueling vehicles. It fuels county vehicles now cuz we have a fill-up station, costs us about a buck and a half a gallon. It's the cleanest burning fuel, um, transportation fuel available. And the economics are such that when we start putting this into the pipeline between what we get for the gas and state and federal, um, energy credits, we're going to pay for the initial construction of the plant we're building at the landfill to, to process the gas in three years. And after that, we'll be bringing in several million dollars in profit a year for county taxpayers, um, through the sale of that gas. So there's a lot of really neat stuff going on that's good for the environment, good for the economy. Um, I think that's all the time I'm gonna take up, previewing it though for you. I'll let the video, um, talk for itself. It's always a little embarrassing when I show this because it starts out with a video of me walking, looking pensive in a park, but we'll just have... We're addressing climate change right here on the local level. We've invested in efficiency and solar power and we're investing in other projects with partners throughout the county to show that you can develop clean alternative fuels while at the same time doing the right thing by our taxpayers. And our landfill is one of the most progressive in the nation. We're capturing methane, we're fueling vehicles, we're generating renewable electricity. And we're about to undergo an exciting transformation. I hope you enjoy this video that's gonna tell you more about this exciting project that's underway.
Generation after generation, family after family, the greatest legacy of Dane County's wholesome, healthy quality of life has always been our wealth of natural resources. Fish-filled lakes, rivers and streams and beautifully preserved parks. But with riches come responsibilities. The families, corporate citizens and institutions of this community entrusted us, their Dane County government, to protect this environment and preserve these natural treasures for future generations. To honor that trust at the highest level, the Dane County Office of Energy and Climate Change was founded in 2017. This body is empowered to define, develop and deploy the action strategies required to do Dane County's part in adapting to the impact of our changing climate by reducing carbon emissions. The momentum of this mission is growing. Dane County is now home to many of the largest solar arrays in the state of Wisconsin. The sun has always shone on Dane County. But now it is also providing over 600 kilowatts of 100% emission-free electricity at 14 sites, which include the new Dane County East District Highway Garage and Medical Examiner's Facility, comprising the second-largest municipally-owned solar project in Wisconsin. The Dane County Regional Airport, where we are working with partners to develop 41 acres of airport-owned land into a large-scale, 8,000-kilowatt solar farm. This will be the third solar installation on the airport campus, which the county already uses to offset energy costs. This new solar farm will be 80 times larger than the other two existing solar installations at the airport. The Dane County Job Center will be the county's 16th solar installation. When completed, these projects are expected to generate over 10 million kilowatt-hours each year of power. Also included is the Lyman F. Anderson Agricultural and Conservation Center. Another priority for the county is cleaning up the lakes. Protecting the purity of our beaches and lake waters, environmental media filters called beach curtains now shield recreational areas from runoff balloons. To reduce algae, another innovative initiative called "Suck Them Up" is now permanently removing decades of phosphorus-litened sediment from 33 miles of waterways feeding the lakes of Dane County. The effects of climate change are undeniable. Weather events historically categorized in 10 or 100-year cycles now happen multiple times a year. Dane County's lakes now freeze weeks later and thaw weeks earlier than they did as recent as the 1990s. And we are launching additional innovations proven to reduce Dane County's carbon footprint while also reducing our energy costs. Among these innovations is our commitment to accelerate the conservation of Dane County's fleet. So far, we've converted 75 vehicles, including one-third of its highway fleet, from fossil fuels to clean burning compressed natural gas, known in energy parlance as CNG. Or, as we'll be calling it from this point forward, RNG, for renewable natural gas. RNG is a truly renewable resource, unlike many other fuel sources that come with harmful effects associated with procuring them. This vehicle energy conversion initiative dovetails with Dane County's newest and perhaps most exciting environmental game changer, which we are very pleased to share with you today. First, let's talk some basic science and some real-world economics. Like all modern landfills, the natural biological decomposition process at Dane County's operation on Highway 1218 produces a gas called biogas. Biogas is about 50% methane. The energy source known as natural gas is 98% methane. The energy source known as natural gas is 98% methane. So, biogas possesses the potential to be used as an energy source once impurities are removed. Most landfills just burn off their biogas, which is required by law. But for the past 23 years, the methane in Dane County's biogas has been harnessed to generate renewable electricity, which in turn has been sold to local utilities. As a result, this process has provided enough renewable electricity to power 4,000 Dane County homes 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. While this project has served us well, we now have an opportunity to further our economic and environmental gains while ensuring that our own energy needs continue to be met in a responsible, sustainable way. This new initiative is the first in the nation, a $28 million project that we're happy to share with you today. Obviously, there are countless technical and economic aspects to a plan of this scope, but for the sake of discussion, let's look at the four basic components. One, we will build an onsite facility, which will enable us to refine all of our biogas, 50% methane, into pipeline-grade natural gas, 98% methane. Two, we will convert our refined gas to renewable natural gas, a highly coveted vehicle fuel because of its minimal environmental impact and maximum efficiency. Three, we will inject this refined gas directly into the A&R TransCanada Transmission Pipeline. Dane County will be the only renewable energy producer from Wisconsin to put gas into this pipeline. Our proximity to this energy superhighway is a major plus. It runs directly under our landfill property. Our RNG will be sold on the open market and be used to propel our own Dane County service fleet. Four, our new system will also have an offloading station that will enable regional biogas digesters from Wisconsin dairy farmers and other agribusiness sources to truck their gas to our facility and use our pipeline interconnect. This will be the first project in the nation to have this capability. This has the potential to significantly improve the economics of digesters. This could lead to more area digesters, which will help lead to cleaner lakes. Centralized offloading will significantly boost the economic and ecological viability of biogas digesters while further protecting the natural purity of Dane County's recreational lakes and waterways. The economic impact of our plan is significant. Renewable fuels are incentivized by both federal and state programs. And the investment will yield enough gas and service-generated revenue to pay off the initial project costs in three years. After that, the operation will generate several million dollars each year, which will go directly to Dane County's general fund. This would otherwise be funded by taxpayer revenues. Not only will this project create jobs and keep skilled workers in Wisconsin, the RNG itself will become a continual resource that provides energy independence while lessening our dependence on foreign sources of fuel. Considering the fact that $12 billion leave Wisconsin for fuel every year, the impact of our keeping those dollars here is fairly evident. The environmental impact is even more profound. RNG from our landfill, used to fuel our own county fleet and countless other vehicles, will have an 88% reduction in carbon emissions when compared to gasoline or diesel fuels. This will help improve air quality here in Dane County. In its first 12 months of operation, now slated to start in 2019, we will displace almost 3 million gallons of gasoline and diesel fuel per year with clean renewable fuel from landfill biogas. As our landfill operations grow, this will increase to more than 4 million gallons of renewable fuel per year. To provide some perspective, that is the equivalent of removing 7,500 cars from the road every single year. To summarize this introductory overview, let me offer the following, which I think sums up the spirit of this next chapter in Dane County's ongoing quest for a cleaner environment through economic innovation. The measure of who we are is what we do with what we have. I wish I could claim that wisdom, but another Wisconsin guy named Vince Lombardi beat me to it. The truth in it, however, belongs to everybody who lives in and loves our Dane County community and all it stands for. The measure of who we are here in Dane County is what we are now doing for our community, our environment, our families, and our future.
So that's a little bit of what we're up to in county government. You're fortunate that you have Supervisor Balag, who can give you updates when you need to. So that's a nice dual role for Jerry to have.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. That's a great program.
Absolutely, yeah.
And it's really, in my perspective, nice to have a unit of government that's actually addressing climate change.
Yeah.
And the county does a great job. It's a great county to live in, and it's only getting better, so.
Yeah, there's a lot we can do at the local level. So if we look at what we can do, you know, instead of complaining about what we can't, right? We can still get a lot done.
Well-stated, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
So it's your day. Are you going to stay?
Yeah, I was thinking about that. You could take over, right?
If you want. It's your day.
I got to be here the next thing, for sure. So item six is Fire Chief Lenzmeyer, Presentation of a Victim Rescued Unit Citation to Crew of South Barrowoke Fire of December 27, 2018. So Chief, you and your staff are on. Welcome.
Thank you, Steve.
Do you want the wireless?
Yeah, you'll need a microphone, Chief.
Just grab it off the stand there. Just pops off.
Thought my assistant here was going to help me with this. Grab the wireless microphone there. Pop it out.
All right, former President Staton, President Carver. Could be sooner or later, Steve, so.
Yeah, that's right. Maybe I will leave.
Village Board members, fellow department heads, of course, the community of Oregon, Oregon Fire EMS district partners, all of the folks that are here tonight. This is a very proud moment for myself here in Oregon. Just a brief history about myself here, it's going to be three years in August that the commission brought me in to take over the fire district here and start being your fire and EMS protection for the great citizens of Oregon, the three municipalities, and of course, the village of Oregon. One of the things that I wanted to come to tonight here and make a formal presentation on is basically an incident that we had back in December. So you're going to have, I'm going to call a crew up here, I'm going to take you back to early December and kind of walk you through what happened and then kind of tell you about the folks that I wanted to present some plagues tonight. So if I could have that crew, that, those four members, Mr. Dave Ingram, Mr. Mike Venden, Alec Lepa, and Alex Knight, please come up here and join me to the left. That'd be great. And again, if I can go back in time, we don't like to go back too much in time sometimes. But basically, I'm going to go back to December 27, 2018, a few months ago. We remember, right before Christmas, fairly warm in Wisconsin, very little snow. We didn't get that cold snap until later in January. Just another normal day for the fire district here in Oregon. And when I say by that, a normal day in Oregon for us, we average about four and a half calls a day of fire and EMS. Of those four and a half calls, majority of the time it's EMS calls, about 600 and some calls per year are fire calls. That particular day, at 16:25 hours, about 25 after 6 that evening, the fire district received a page from the Dane County 911 Center. That page was a call for service for Barrowoke Avenue, and that call came in as a residential smoke alarm going off. We received quite a few residential smoke alarms. Guy on the end, Mr. Mike Venden, captain of the crew, basically was on call. Of course, we have a few ambulance folks that would also be part of that crew. They're not here tonight, they're out of town. A crew of basically six responding to that call. Shortly thereafter, them leaving the station, if you can go with me, that call got upgraded. That call got upgraded by the Dane County 911 Center, very shortly thereafter, basically informing us that this was a structure fire. In that structure fire, it was reported that there was a person in the house that said the house was on fire. That normally doesn't happen in most cases, but here, these folks had an alarm going out indicating that there was a small fire or some smoke and heat in that house, and we were responding to it. At that time, that got upgraded, all of our mutual aid, automatic aid partners from around the community. Again, it is our job to make sure we come with enough folks to be able to handle that structure fire of at least 14 or more folks showing up on the incident of that magnitude. Captain Venden was the officer of the truck responding to the call. Mr. Dave Ingram, second person here, lives very close to Barrowoke Avenue. When he heard that call, he diverted and he went right to the call because it was close to his house. He started doing the stuff that we would normally do after we arrive on the scene, which means doing a 360 on the structure, looking at the structure, seeing what he can get for information, and passing that along to that next incoming crew. Dave was there doing what he needs to do. He had some gut feeling that something was, somebody was in that house, and not knowing the other information that we already knew coming in on the radios, he stopped there and started to gather that information. The remaining crew, Mr. Alex Knight here and Alec Lepa, both are some interns of ours. Alex Knight, step forward just a little bit. Thank you. Alex Knight, going to be graduating from our intern academy very soon here as a firefighter-medic. He's looking for jobs around the state right now. He's going to be a fine fire medic someplace, but he'll be leaving us here probably next month, the way it looks. Mr. Alec Lepa, another intern of ours. These are, they're living interns that are part of our program, been here since last June. State-certified firefighter, going through EMT cause currently. That crew, along with Captain Venden, to get on scene. Captain Venden and crew basically made a fast judgment, did a 360 on the structure, walking around that structure, making sure everything was, what they thought was safe. Seen some smoke, they forced entry to that particular building. They got inside of that building, very shortly arriving on scene with hose for suppression needs, that kind of thing. They went in, inside the door, they found a young lady. The young lady, they pulled out our EMS folks, be able to transport, and worked with our medics and the medics from the city of Madison, and everything worked out for that young lady. I am very proud of this group for going and doing what they need to do to save someone. This is what, in my 35 years, let me tell you, a lot of times we don't have these kind of outcomes. This is a very proud moment for me, for these folks, to be part of that. They trained, they worked together. We write SOPs, SOGs, that everybody's on that same page. They flawlessly did what they needed to do in a very short timeframe. When I got there from my residence, I live out on Bel Brook in the town of Oregon, this group already had the patient out, fire put out, and said, "Fire chief, this is what we got to deal with," within 10 minutes of me getting to town. So I can't believe of this great success that these folks have done. I'm very proud of them. Many times in my career, this has not turned out this way, and we, I'm dealing with other things. But this is one of those proud moments. What's even more proud for me is that I have that victim here tonight with me. I'm going to ask her to come on up and hand out the awards. Shamika, would you please come up? If you could make a presentation of the day over there, second one. Mr. Alex Knight. And then we have one for the whole group. That concludes the presentation of awards. Steve?
Thank you. Thanks for your good presentation. Thanks to your crew, did such a fine job. You recognize them very well. I would also like to recognize you, Chief, for the job you do, because there's somebody in leadership that's making that happen, so we appreciate that also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, there's any trying to get your...
Yeah, where are they? Yeah, okay, I couldn't find you. Just wait, just wait here a minute, please. Come on up, we have another presentation. I couldn't find you in the audience.
Hi, I'm Randy Joswick, and this is my wife, Tina Juno. We own Oregon Frozen Yogurt, and Shamika is our most excellent, awesome, favorite employee. And first of all, we want to thank the Oregon Fire Department EMS for basically saving her life. We thank you for that. And we took, we have a donation jar that we have out on our counter for, you know, different fundraisers and things like that. And so we had it out for your family. And so we have a little donation we matched with the community gave, and we just want to, we want to just give that to you.
Thank you. Another nice example of what our community is like, so we appreciate that. So you have stuff. Number seven?
Yes.
Laura's in the background there. She's sitting in the background.
Okay. So we'll go on to item number seven, which is public appearances. Item A, public hearing to consider the application of the Village of Oregon to discuss an act upon ordinance number 19-03 to amend section 1805 of the Village of Oregon Code of Ordinances to update land dedication and fee in lieu of dedication requirements. Please note, at the March 6 park board motion, Miller moved, seconded by Clues, to recommend the village board to adopt the recommendations related to impact fees provided in the park impact fee and land dedication policy needs assessment document. That motion carried 6-0. At the April 14 planning commission meeting, the commission also recommended approval.
I got to say, Steve, I've never seen anybody clear a room out like you.
See, this is why I'm retiring. Good timing, right? So I will open the hearing. That then takes us to the village attorney's comments and review of the needs assessment. Matt, you're on.
Actually, this is going to be Laura Callen.
Oh, that's right. I didn't see you back there either, Laura. Welcome. Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
We're pleased you're the one that's working on this.
Well, that got me a little emotional.
Believe me, so am I.
I'm not crying, you're crying. Thank you. Before the board tonight are two ordinances that update and expand the means by which the village may fund the capital costs of its park system as that system grows to meet the needs of new residential development in the village. Again, the emphasis is on finding, expanding existing means and finding new ways to fund the capital costs of the park system, and in particular, the costs of acquiring park land and funding improvements to that park land with a variety of amenities from park shelters to soccer fields and courts. So that's the goal. The first ordinance amends the village's land division chapter of its code, and specifically, it modifies the land dedication and fee in lieu of dedication requirements for residential subdivision projects. So these are requirements that apply when a property owner seeks a land division. And the modification is necessary in part to respond to a change in the law that occurred in 2018. So the, the first ordinance actually decreases the size of the land dedication requirement down from 2,900 square feet per residential dwelling unit to 898 square feet per residential dwelling unit, and then increases the fee in lieu of dedication from $750 to $1,664. The justification for... The justification for the modifications is set forth in a needs assessment that has been on file with the clerk's office, and it really responds to the estimated costs of parkland in the village as reported by, or in the twenty-eighteen park and recreation plan. So that's the first amendment. The second amendment amends the village's impact fee ordinance to create two new types of park impact fees. One that would fund the cost of parkland acquisition, and again, that fee would, would apply in the rare case where a property owner is developing a vacant lot in the village. Most of the time, the village is going to secure funds or land for parks via the land division process. But we have a, we, the second ordinance proposes a mechanism to capture other sorts of developments where the village would need to acquire funds to pay for parks, parkland. The second type of park impact fee is the park improvement impact fee, and again, that is designed to, and sized to fund new growth's share of the costs of improving parks. So again, that fee applies to help defray the costs of park amenities of the kind that are identified again in this needs assessment that justifies the, the park impact fees. So, that's a broad overview of the two ordinances. The ordinance also creates a, an appeals part process, which is a requirement of state law. So if, if a village is going to adopt either a land dedication requirements or impact fees, it has to provide a process where a property owner can appeal the requirements.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, we're, are there any public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to item four on this, village board comments and questions, anyone?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
At whose discretion is it to, to determine whether or not it's a fee that's paid or land in lieu of a fee that's given?
I believe, Matt, can you help me out on that?
And the subdivision ordinance in that process, I believe what we would find in looking at the ordinances, boy, and I'm gonna have to brush myself up, but the, my memory of the historical process is that the village makes the determination of whether to accept land as suitable or not, and that typically is part of the review process for proposed subdivision, the parks committee, plan commission.
As I say, the first stop is the, the subdivider, Jeff comes in, the developer comes in and provides a plat, and Mike Slabney looks at it, and sometimes Mike will say, "No, that's not acceptable," or he'll say, "That's okay," and so forth. Then it goes to the planning commission for usually a conceptual discussion, and the parkland is discussed at that point, but then it also goes to the park board, and the park board has to sign off on, on what's happening with the subdivision in the parkland.
That's our process. And, you know, where it can get a little sticky is, there can be sometimes differences of opinion as to whether certain land is, should, whether the developer should be given credit for park dedication purposes associated with certain land that they're proposing to dedicate, and ultimately, the village has the authority to say yes or no to what's being proposed.
I was just gonna give it an, an example on the park board of the division that's off of MM. Yeah, because the developer is developing it in three different stages, and if they had to do a certain amount of parkland at each stage, didn't make a lot of sense. We wanted them to sort of save it up and do either a big park once those stages are complete, and we set a timeline, like if you don't finish those within ten years, I think it was, then, then we'd rather have the, the payment. So it's, it was an either or, we, we wanted park space over the money, but if it wasn't gonna happen in a timely fashion, we'd take the money. And that, that's kind of the stuff we discussed at the park board level.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, trustees? Any questions for Laura? Okay, seeing none, I will close the hearing. We'll go to item six, which is to discuss some possible action on approving ordinance number nineteen oh three to amend section eighteen point oh five of the Village of Oregon Code of Ordinances to update land dedication and fee in lieu of dedication requirements. So our first motion is, the board, by a two-thirds vote of members, may suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings at tonight's meeting. Do we have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So our next motion, if the board, and we have suspended the rules, we need a motion to adopt ordinance number nineteen zero three.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. So item B, as a public hearing, to consider the application of the Village of Oregon to discuss an act upon ordinance number nineteen oh four to create sections thirteen point one-two and thirteen point one-three of the Village of Oregon Code of Ordinances regarding park impact fees and impact fee appeals. I will open that hearing. Laura, additional comments here?
None, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Any public comments from anyone in the audience? Seeing none, we'll go to item four, village board comments. Same as last time, right?
Yeah, I mean, this is, is this, these are the sections, refresh my memory, these sections are the, are these the ones where we talk about the amounts?
This is the, is how their park improvement fees are, we're actually gonna be...
Oh, park, okay, gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, good.
Anything else?
Just checking.
Okay, so I will close the hearing and go to our motions, and the first motion is to suspend the rules and waive first and second readings at tonight's meeting. Need that motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next motion, I would ask, is to consider adopting ordinance number nineteen dash zero four.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Laura.
Thanks for your work on this, Laura.
It's a lot of work.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
I do want to thank Laura, this is, this is a very complicated matter, and she did a fabulous job helping Lisa and me get through this, so, Lisa would say that, and Matt, too, sorry.
She helped all of us.
Thanks, Laura.
Thanks for your good work. Item eight, village attorney and village administrator. Item A, discussion of possible action, continued discussion regarding new TIC campus plan and tax increment financing request and possible action. This is reapproval of agreement to undertake development with TIC. So the motion I need is to reapprove that agreement with a different effective date.
I'll move that.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Just to briefly explain, I'm sorry this is back again, I was hoping that we'd be all done after the last meeting, at the last meeting. Yeah. At, at the last meeting, the agreement was approved on the condition that it not be signed until a certified survey map delineating the property that the project's gonna be built on is actually approved and recorded. At that time, TIC was up in the air regarding exactly what it was going to be buying and building on. It was uncertain about whether it was gonna buy all the, you know, a larger parcel, all of the land included in this area, or just buy, what about twelve acres? And it's now made a, a decision that it's going to buy just the twelve acres. It has a CSM approved that's been filed with the village, that's on its way towards approval, and...
In May.
In May. So the, the CSM won't actually be voted on and approved until May, but we've been told by TIC that that is the final configuration that they're gonna be working with. And so the request is to...
It's also affecting your small business loans.
Oh, yeah, they, they, they need to, well, they're, they're asking us to get the agreement signed so they can submit it to the SBA. The Small Business Administration wants to see that this agreement is in place and has been approved as part of their approval of his loan application. So instead of waiting until the CSM is actually approved and recorded, the, the request is that the board approve the agreement and allow it to be signed using the, the unrecorded CSM as the exhibit that we would attach, and, and calculating the base value of the property based on that property description. And so that's the request, and I would, if you want to see the thing keep moving, I would recommend approval of that.
Are there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Jerry.
Yes, Matt, could you explain if there is a possible downside to this, and if there is, what it would be?
No, I don't see a downside to this. The only reason we held it open at the last meeting was continuing, we didn't have definitive answer yet, is, is that the property that you're gonna buy? We've now been told definitively, that's what we're gonna buy. So I think it's, I, I don't see any reason to be concerned about it. We're gonna base our calculation on that.
Very good, thank you.
Good question. Anything else? So we have the motion, second, to reapprove the agreement with TIC with a different effective date. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six one. Thanks, Matt. Item B, follow-up to discussion from April eighth board meeting. Now, there's a note from the village's financial advisor regarding the bank RFP for the TIC loan. The bank would be limited to a ten-year note, so to get the payments out to twenty years, you would need to do a balloon payment at ten years and refinance it. The risk you would have is that interest rates aren't as good as they are now, and the financing ends up costing you more than if you'd stayed with a twenty-year state trust fund loan. So the village staff is recommending doing the loan through the state trust fund loan program, which is resolution number nineteen dash eleven. Board of Commissioners, public land, one million dollar state trust fund loan, at a four-and-a-half percent interest rate for twenty years for the TIC project. So the motion I'd like is to approve resolution number nineteen dash eleven for a one million dollar state trust fund loan for the project.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
For discussion.
Thank you.
Mike or Lisa, please. What is the differential cost between the two obligations that are possible, between the state trust fund loan and the bank loan?
Well, we never got, we never got the interest rate, but our, our financial advisor was saying that you can only go out ten years, and it was gonna be a taxable event, where this is not a taxable event, and this, this interest rate's locked in for twenty years.
Okay, and the big thing is...
And I, I'm sorry.
Big thing is it's not taxable.
It's not, right, right. And, and I did tell Jason that he was, he was fine going with the state trust fund.
He is, okay. Thank you.
Yep. Other questions or comments, anyone? Okay, so we have the motion, and second, to approve resolution number nineteen dash eleven for a one million dollar state trust fund loan for the project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries six one. Item C, discussion of possible action, resolution number nineteen dash twelve, outdoor recreation aids, DNR property acquisition stewardship grant for the rotary bike trail. Recommend a motion, adopt resolution number nineteen dash twelve. Please note, the village will also apply for Dane County grant for constructing the new segment of trail.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
So, so this is the stewardship, a requirement of stewardship program that we submit this resolution, and this would be for the acquisition of the, the property that we're gonna be trying to obtain for the, the trail. And I noted on the agenda, then, at some point, it looks like this summer, then we would start to work with the county to actually get the grant to actually pay for putting the trail in.
And they have money for rehabilitating trails, right? The Amys by High Water.
That's part of that grant, that, actually, that Joe was, put into his budget, yep.
And there's no guarantee, but Joe has been very supportive of, of that trail, getting it reopened as well as getting it connected to Badger State Trail. Jerry?
Oh, yes, again, just to be clear on this, and for anyone that's watching, this is the, a bypass, really.
To remove the trail that's in, that's in the water now, to move it further south out of the water.
Out of the water.
Correct.
Okay.
And this is just a grant to be able to allow us to be reimbursed, hopefully, half of the appraised value of the easement.
And do we have any idea what the total cost is gonna be at this time?
We're working on that with the, the landowners and everything, so...
I think when we talked about it at the last meeting, Steve, not to put words in your mouth, but didn't you guess with the land, all in, somewhere around three-hundred thousand?
That was Jeff's guess, yeah.
Jeff's guess?
That's, that's the construction, acquisition, everything, yes.
I think it's fair to have a working number, you know, when we're talking about projects like this, especially in the environment we're in right now.
That's all we have in the budget right now, but we have not, we're, our engineers have not given us a, an updated cost.
Right, thank you.
Is this in the capital plan now?
This is actually, I say, we're actually gonna, the board continues with this, we're gonna borrow this money on May twentieth for the project.
My, my understanding is this is an unbudgeted expense item. This was not part of the twenty nineteen budget.
It is. It was in the budget.
Okay.
We knew, we knew we'd be having to look at...
So you earmarked three-hundred thousand, and, and I'm sorry, I sat through all those meetings, the details just not coming to the front of my mind. You earmarked three-hundred thousand dollars to repair the bike trail?
Correct.
In October of last year?
Correct.
And I, since this is kind of becoming, you know, public talking about, let's get that done, I've been getting a lot of feedback that people want to get this done.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Absolutely.
And after retirement, Steve is going to be working as our unpaid consultant on a few items related to this, right?
Yeah, if you'd like me to.
Is there a condition that we name it after him?
The what, the something that's under the water we will, Jerry.
Yeah. The part that goes away. The submarine trail.
We're gonna need, we're gonna need Steve's help to continue with this, and we'll appreciate us all on this.
That'd be the section going from where it ends on Fish Hatchery through Pittsburgh, and I know some property owners where potentially the trail might go, so, they were, had former students at school. Any other questions or comments?
I, I'm just wondering, if, assuming that this goes through, and we borrow the money, is, is this project gonna be sort of fast-tracked, so people might be able to use the trail yet this summer at some point, or?
We're, we're kind of taking it day by day. What we're looking at right now is strictly negotiating the, the le, or the, the easement with the landowners. We have kind of a, a good structure in there from Matt in doing that, and we're, we're working on that. Our hope is that we would at least have some sort of bypass, even a walk path around there this year. We're not gonna have a paved path around there this year, but if we could have something that would have some surface, walking surface that would at least, I mean, when this was happening before it got really deep, people were cutting through the woods anyways, and I'd like to do something a little more robust than that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, they might have to walk their bike around, but they could at least get around and get back on the trail again, so.
Yeah, I was just looking for a rough timeline, in case people ask, how soon?
I've been pushing on that, too.
Yeah, thanks.
Anything else on this item for questions or comments? Okay, so we have the motion, and second, to adopt resolution number nineteen dash twelve regarding the bike trail. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
I just have a quick question, and this is just off the top of my head, but have you contacted the Army Corps of Engineers or, or the government that way to see if they'd be willing to lend us a temporary solution?
What are, like, what type of temporary solution are you thinking?
Well, I'm just thinking these kinds of problems come up every day in the Army, that you've got to get from here to there across the short, relatively short span of water, and there might be something in their inventory that they'd be willing to lend us that we could put in place.
Yeah, I've not contacted the Army Corps of Engineers, no, I'm not...
It might be worth a phone call.
Okay, I'll, I'll look into that.
Good, thanks, Jeff. Anything else? Okay, go to item nine, approval of minutes, they're number four tonight. Item ten, approval of vouchers, we have vouchers tonight, amount two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and eighty-seven cents.
So moves.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It's a good time to do this.
Did you see Lisa smile when you got up?
Any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion, second, to approve vouchers, amount two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars, eighty-seven cents. Roll call, please.
Glish?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Staton?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Foudre?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Item eleven is community input. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak with the board. Anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will go to item A, proclamations and announcements. Item A, board comments, anyone?
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I haven't said this, but all of me... And I haven't said this, but all I've experienced, I've enjoyed doing this, so I don't miss it, but I know it's going to be in good hands with Jeannie and the board and staff, so. But I, I will be keeping an eye on Jeff, just so you know.
Which Jeff?
The...
Yeah.
Yeah. No, sorry.
You said that really fast.
I know Alex loves to get letters to paper, so we will see. Okay, item A, staff comments. Notes, some meetings, or anything you want to...
Meeting tomorrow night.
Don't forget, tomorrow night.
We have a proclamation.
What?
We have another proclamation we could do.
Did you want to do that here?
I don't know. Sure.
Sure, let's do that.
We have a proclamation, since it is under proclamations and announcements, we have our own proclamation. It was not Dane County or anything. I'll just read this very quickly. Proclamation for village staff, from village staff, from President Steve Staten on his retirement from the village board, April 15, 2019. The staff of the village of Oregon, Wisconsin, which wishes to recognize President Steve Staten for his many contributions to the growth and prosperity of the village, as well as thank him for his unwavering leadership and support of village staff. Whereas, Steve single-handedly and effectively outlawed the possession, use, and distribution of any and all plastic disposable water bottles on village hall property. Whereas, Steve, with his 32 years as a public educator and counselor, was able to have nearly 90% of those who appeared before the village board be referred to as, quote, "one of my former students." Whereas, Steve was willing to overlook highly qualified candidates and hire a local engineer slash resident as a public works director, following the retirement of Mark Bielow, a decision that will haunt him the rest of his life.
You're right.
Whereas, Steve has served on the village board so long that when he started on the village board, he still had hair and most of his long-term memory. Whereas, we would like to raise a glass to toast Steve in his retirement, but he can't, we can't, because he would never give us a temporary alcohol license to do this anymore. Whereas, we believe Steve will enjoy his retirement from the village board by spending most of his time writing complaint letters to Public Works and watching videos from Red Box. Whereas, we as staff recognize that Steve is uniquely talented, he's gifted, he's a caring leader who will be greatly missed by all. Therefore, be it resolved, the village staff formally recognizes President Steve Staten and publicly wishes to thank him for everything he did to make our jobs better.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
He wouldn't need to sign it, I'd say no one would.
Yes.
No one else would want to sign it, I can't.
Jeff, that was nicely done. Thank you.
Well, Steve, I've been excused, so congratulations.
Thanks, Matt.
It's been great working with you.
It has been a free place to stand.
Me, too.
Thank you.
That's okay, I didn't have anything, that's why I left.
Okay, we'll go to item 13, communication and miscellaneous business. Item A, discussion, possible action, procurement of new leaf vacuum truck. Recommend a motion, just approve the purchase of an ODB model with the long number there, leaf vacuum truck, and a pertinence from McQueen Equipment of Menominee Falls for the purchase price of $203,181.13, funding to be from Fund 414 Equipment under 2019 borrowing.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I bet you that's the only time in my life I'll ever see the word "pertinence" used in a sentence.
I love the word "pertinence."
Is that one of your favorites?
Yes.
That's the second time, yeah. Jeff, he does a big word every year.
Yeah. It's in his calendar.
My word of the, word of the year calendar. Real quickly, this is, we're, we are very excited about this piece of equipment. I would say one of the, the most significant complaints we get every year is just the fact that the equipment we use to suck up our leaves and dispose of them is, is a lot of work, and it's very inefficient, which causes us sometimes three and a half weeks to go through the entire village. You know, we've had this kind of in the budget. We actually planned to get it last year and, and just did not be able to procure that. We ended up using that money to, which was already budgeted, for the street sweeper, which I hope we've seen out, and I would say, when I came back from vacation, the streets looked fantastic. And I, the, the work that Jeff and, and the guys are doing with that truck are outstanding. This is an exciting piece of equipment. It is a dedicated leaf vacuum device. I mean, we can use it for other things with leaves, but really, the main purpose is going to be those, those ti, that time of the year where we're out there sucking leaves. It's operated instead of with two people, tandemly in a truck and trailer. It's one person with a joystick controlled from the cap. A couple years ago, we actually had Stilton come over and demo one of these units for us, and went down, is that Ash Street? I think it was Ash Street.
Yep, it was.
And, and I, I followed them around with some video and everything like this, but then I, I followed our regular truck around with the video, and I watched, and I've actually done out, gone out and done it for a day. And then we watched the, the Stilton one, and it was literally night and day. I mean, two to three times faster at least, and has a much larger hopper. And I think, you know, this will kind of go from being kind of the worst job of the year to do, to probably one of the more coveted jobs of being able to go around and suck up leaves and stuff like that. So it's budgeted for this year, and came in right. I think we're borrowing $205,000 for it. We're at 203, so we're right where we need to be with it. I did go around, I, I looked at other manufacturers. I found there were really only two manufacturers out there that made this equipment. That was the standalone type of thing, and, and within our areas, within our five-state areas here. And then I found out that both are the exact same machines, just with different labels. They come out of the same factory. So we go through something called municipal, what do we call it? What is that on here? It's a municipal pricing, basically, which is an agreed-upon discounted price for this equipment, and so I'm very confident we're getting a good price on this piece of equipment and what it should be.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I see these guys in the fall go by on Orchard Drive. There's two guys, and it's noisy, and they got hearing muffs on, and dust and dirt all over, and it's, doesn't look like a fun job. So this will, I think, be good for our employees, and also really good for the village to get this done. Plus, it, a better job of keeping leaves out of the waterways, which is good, too. Joe would be happy to hear that. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, actually. I was going to say, I'm going to ask a Jerry question. What's going to, what are you going to do with the old equipment? Well, would you do, at busy times, would you use both?
Yeah, we're going to actually keep, keep both, and we'll ma, keep maintaining that one. And there is a very good time, because, you know, the, the way the leaves fall is different every year, kind of like how we get snow every year. And so there are times where we might want to have two crews out at once, and have this truck and the crew out at the same time.
Okay.
So now we know what the punishment's going to be for underperformance.
I was saying the same thing.
You'll be truck number two.
We had a new employee come out this, a new employee start this last year, and I think he sucked leaves for three or four weeks. So, good initiation.
Good question.
Yeah.
Jeff, you referred to municipal pricing program. Is that a company program, or is that a state program?
No, that's a federal, that's a federal, federal pricing program. There's, there's more and more of these, there's like two of them that I can think of popping up, and they come out, they, they actually have pricing for everything down to janitorial supplies, to everything else. And, and the idea behind it is they've already negotiated the cost, a, a fair cost for this, and, and they can give it to you at that cost. We use it for vehicles and other stuff, too.
Okay, is that relatively new?
It's new for me. I've been introduced to it in the last three years, but I think, I think it's relatively new. It's just something that I think they kind of got on board, thinking that they can offer a competitive price, they don't have to go through as many loopholes or hoops.
How much of a savings is that, then? Just...
It was... Well, this was seven and a half percent.
Oh, that's quite a bit, on a $200,000 machine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, so we have the motion, second, to purchase the leaf vacuum, amount of $203,181.13. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
On behalf of my staff, thank you.
Item B, discussion, possible action on Public Works summer LTE positions. Recommend a motion, approve Public Works to advertise, interview, and provide conditional offers of employment for the 2019 seasonal LTE program.
I'll move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Yep, and these, these actually, we do have this advertised right now, and this is normal. I just want to bring this to your attention. We do have six positions open, and we have, right now, I don't have anyone returning necessarily, but mostly it's just kids that go on the internships and stuff like that, so. But hopefully get some good applicants.
Yeah, we had to do away with this years ago, and our parts suffered because of lack of attention, so it's been good to have that come back as time's gone on.
It's a good job, it's a good summer job. So honestly, if you know of somebody who is in that, that we look actually for three, kind of three groups of people, either just graduating high school, or near a graduation high school, early college, are great for the shorter summer term, summer intern LTEs. And then there, we have this kind of April, May through October, kind of longer span, that really works well with semi-retired or retired individuals. I know.
Will you let them run the leaf?
I'm not looking for work.
Yes.
Well, then, then you'd be my boss.
And we, we will suck leaves, then.
Yeah, that'd be called rebellion.
But, but they do really work well. We've had some really good luck with some of our older staff that have joined us and, and worked really, really well with that, so.
Good. Thanks, Jeff. Any questions? So we have the motion, second, to approve Public Works to advertise, interview, and provide conditional offers of employment for the 2019 seasonal LTE program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Oregon Area Senior Center, 2018 annual report. Rachel?
Good evening. Our annual report this year is bright and colorful, and not very long, and jam-packed with stuff that's interesting. And if you've taken the time to read it through, you will find there's a lot going on at the senior center. This actually is a four-page report. We're looking at page one right now. The senior center, basically, the top three uses of the senior center have been pretty similar for the last couple of years. It's nutrition, exercise, and recreation. We serve just over 11,000 meals, some of those in partnership with Ziggy's for their My Meal, My Way program on Thursdays. Over 5,000 exercise classes were taken by seniors last year. You go onto page number two, you can see some things that we introduced in 2018. Balance classes, which are real important for people. We did more intergenerational programming, more computerized record-keeping, medication storage bags for seniors to store their medications so that other people aren't able to access those. 187 seniors got case management. There was over 1,000 hours of that provided. The bottom of page two, almost a half a page, there is community partners. We really value the community partnerships we have. We have a lot of businesses and individuals that we work with, and every one of them offers us something valuable, and we couldn't do what we do without the community partners that help us out. On page three, you, you'll note, we gave over 3,000 rides to people. Transportation is a huge issue for seniors in rural areas. They don't have many options, and so we do the best we can with the programs and the, the grant funds that are available to us to provide rides, to get people to the grocery store, and to doctor's appointments. The population that we serve, the demographic information there is pretty interesting. More than a third of the households in the Village of Oregon contain somebody who's age 60 or over. That's a, a large number of households. You have a population in the village here that is 17% age 60 or over. More than a third of the people over age 65 live alone, and a woman age 65 or over living in the Village of Oregon has a 20% risk of living in poverty. So that gives you some ideas of, of the people that the senior center is hoping, helping serve, and we do our best to keep our services affordable. Just below that, there's a box that kind of outlines how we try and make it as easy as possible for seniors to afford the kinds of things that happen at the senior center. Our 2018 revenue sources, the Village of Oregon is our biggest provider of funding, and we appreciate that very much, and thank you for the support that you provided in 2018. You can see the other funding sources listed there in that table, and in the very lower right-hand part of that page, you can see as well that our Council on Aging, our advisory board, also invested $20,500 on behalf of the center last year, which would, I guess technically, make them the perhaps fifth-largest supporter of the center. Our volunteers are invaluable, as always, more than three full-time positions. Our hours provided by volunteers. The Adult Day Program continues to grow. As we put these statistics together, we thought, you know, statistics are interesting. A one-year snapshot is only a one-year snapshot. It's kind of interesting to see how things look over time. So we found we had some pretty good statistics from 2010, and we put together the fourth page of this, which is a comparison of 2010 and 2018, and we were frankly rather surprised at the amount of increase that we saw in many of the activities that go on at the senior center. We knew things had increased. We weren't really expecting that we were going to see that case management had increased over 330%, or that the number of seniors receiving that case management was up by 290%. Or our medical rides were up 200%. Across the board, things are just exploding, in part because the baby boomers are exploding. Two things didn't increase over that time period. One of them was our loan closet usage, and the, meaning, we had fewer people come in and borrow canes, and crutches, and walkers, and all that stuff. And the only reason I can think that might have been the case is that our exercise class use went up hugely. So I'm wondering if maybe we have people who aren't as in need of some of that medical equipment. That would be a good reason. I'm hopeful. The other thing that has not gone up since 2010 is staff hours. We're down, we actually had 30 hours a week more in staff hours in 2010 than we had in 2018, so we've been doing a lot more with fewer staff hours. And we've pretty much maxed out at what we can do with our current number of staff hours. Some, just some interesting statistics down in the lower right corner. Thursdays are our busiest day of the week, in case you're interested. And that was our annual report. We, we also created, for a presentation we were making to another organization, an overview of services that the senior center offers, and Mike suggested that we include this, because it's kind of a nice synopsis of what the senior center does. It's a, a good way for people, if they scan this, to realize the kinds of things that happen at the center, and perhaps help people realize that we're not a nursing home, we're not an assisted living. There's still people in the community who think that's the case, but all these other things are going on there. So if anybody has any questions for me about either the annual report or the synopsis of services, I'd be happy to try and answer them, but I would also say thank you for all the support you provided in 2018.
Thank you, Rachel. Very nicely done. Other questions for Rachel? Go ahead, Jerry.
Just, I have a comment, Rachel. Actually, it's kind of a question, too.
Mm-hmm.
Do you, this is a good presentation. Have you made it to your other major partners?
I will be at the Town of Oregon's annual meeting tomorrow night to present it to them, and I will be at the Rutland, a Rutland Town Board meeting in May to present it to them. So, yeah, I try to, I try to make sure that they all have the opportunity to see that information.
Because it is very interesting and useful.
Thank you.
And then Rachel and I are going to be, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, we're going to be talking about the, having to do with the staffing levels. We're sort of talking about it at the joint meeting in July with the towns, as you know, word knows that. Sorry.
Anything else, anyone?
So I'll just say, having been at several meetings, it, the senior, it's a hopping place. It's busy.
Yeah, it is busy.
This report is really nicely done. I made the same comment for what Jennifer's done at the library, but that the reports draw you in, give a lot of pertinent information in a way that is easy to digest, and, and people, I think, will actually be pulled in to read it. So it's, it's good publicity.
Thank you.
Good information, yeah.
Thank you. A lot of credit goes to Ann, the assistant director, who does all of the creating it in computerized form after I hand her little sketches and things. She creates the product. And she sings, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else, anyone? Okay, so we'll go to item D, discussion, possible action. We need to execute the amended and restated senior center service agreement. The recommend a motion is to approve that amended agreement.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
I think this one's pretty self-explanatory. Rutland's service area changed in 2019. The agreement that the Town of Rutland, the Town of Oregon, and the Village of Oregon all signed does not reflect the accurate service area now for Rutland. So we're trying to get everybody to execute an amendment, so we can make that an accurate agreement again.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions or comments? So we have the motion, second to approve the amended agreement at the senior center. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious.
Thank you, and I would just say to Steve, as one of your actual true former students that he keeps referring to, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much. Item B, for information only, memorandum regarding closing of Jefferson Street South Main Street parking lot. Jeff comments, it's about four to six weeks, right?
Yes, we're hoping four to six weeks. Closed today, there's fencing up there. It's exciting to see that happening. I understand, and of course, those poles will be coming down, the parking lot will be reconstructed, and I'm pretty excited about it, seeing this kind of come to close down.
Yeah, that'll be nice. Have you heard much from downtown business people yet?
A little bit. I'm meeting with one on Wednesday afternoon. That was, had some concerns, but I think most people, you know, we've been walking them through this process. It was supposed to get done last year, but due to the rebidding, it got postponed, but we understand, I mean, I feel for them. I know it's an inconvenience, and it's going to be challenging, but it's kind of like when we did the downtown, we kind of have to push through it and understand that there's something on the horizon that'll be much better.
Yeah, it's a little pain to get to something better, so that's the way it goes.
You know, what might be helpful, we've talked about the alternative parking options in the village, and for people that are in the village, we know those, but people that come from outside don't. It might be helpful to have a small map to lay out, you know, alternative parking available and show them the Lutheran church just to block up.
Yeah, we could, we have that exhibit.
Yep. I've been ever talking about.
We could blow that up and laminate it and put it on the fence over there or something like that.
It might be helpful.
Thanks, Jeff.
Anything else? Okay, so we'll go to item F, letter from Charter, Spectre Mid-America LLC now holds a state agency authority to operate the cable system in the Village of Oregon.
This is FYI.
Is that going to have any impact on us? Still be the same thing, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Item G, information from Department of Transportation regarding Highway 14 project in 2020 and 2021. For people who are watching, you can look at our website and see that.
I'm trying, I think, I think they're going to have a public information meeting in May, I believe.
Yeah, I think that's right.
The biggest impact this is going to have on the village is when, when they go to resurface the bridge over 138 at the south entrance door gun. As it stood last time I spoke with them, it will actually be closing down 138, and the on-ramps and off-ramps will be the northbound and southbound lanes. And the projected queuing or backup of traffic is significant.
Yeah.
But again, it's going to be one of those, it's going to be a short duration when the deck's closed, but it'll be, it'll be kind of a headache for a while. The rest is barrier, the median barrier, the wires you see that run right down the median to help cars from not going over to the other direction of traffic when they go out of control, that's, will probably have very minimal impact on us as a village.
Okay.
It is, it is, sometime between June, they plan on having a public information meeting.
I did see that they had talked about temporary lights at one intersection. Have we thought about how that's going to impact the intersection of Perry Parkway and Geneville?
No, we're trying to get this done before, obviously, I mean, the intersection will be done before then.
Oh, well.
If it's a signalized intersection, which I'm hoping for, but we'll see what DOT allows us and everything, it'll probably have demand, demand-type signaling, so that if things start to back up significantly, then it will go to a forced green through the intersection and clear it out. And so I hope that'll be kind of the way we'll handle the peak rush hour, morning and evening times.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, item H, Village Assessment Information Sheet for 2019. So information here for folks, Iggy.
Assessments are about what they were last year. In talking to our assessor, Bill Gaber, he's indicating that homes are still being purchased for more than, than what people are selling, so that is still driving numbers up.
They're, they're, they're selling more than the asking price.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if anybody has questions. Letters went out last week. People are receiving them, I'm getting calls, so.
Yeah. I'll be calling tomorrow.
It starts, it starts tomorrow, Steve.
I know your number. Any questions on that? Okay, item I, discussion, possible action, authorization of public works to advertise for the 2019 sewer lining and.
I, I.
I, I removal project.
Somebody.
I gather that's what that was.
Somebody.
This came from Jeff, so.
No, I did not do that. No, I'm serious.
You know, that's for middle, middle school kids, too.
I saw this and I thought, well, that's funny. That's an autocorrect somewhere in there. It's I and I removal.
Yeah, okay.
Not me and me.
So recommend a motion, motion to approve public works to advertise and solicit competitive bids for the 2019 sewer lining and I, I removal project.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Jerry.
It's I and I aggregation.
Infiltration and inflow, that's the, that's the clear water that we're getting, and we're getting obviously so much more of it now that we have such high groundwater tables, from cracks, from roots, from that kind of stuff, and split pipes and poor connections.
So a lot more water goes through the wastewater.
And this is what will produce the video that we'll see eventually, that's been on the future agenda items, right? For putting the lines on.
I was going to put a lining video on that, that's right.
I've been waiting.
I know, Ben has been waiting.
I will have to do that.
I'm sorry, I'm going to miss that. If you'll let me know, I'll stop down.
You can watch at home.
Yeah.
And actually, there's a chance we may be doing this lining.
You can watch it on.
Might be crowding.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? So we have a motion, second to approve public works to advertise and solicit competitive bids for the 2019 sewer lining and I, I removal project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious.
Or I, I.
Yeah, me, me.
Say aye.
Yeah, there you go. Item G, discussion, possible action, updated post issuance compliance policy for tax exempt and tax advantage obligations and continuing disclosure. Recommended motion is to approve that updated policy.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
This is coming as a recommendation from our financial advisor. The two changes on page nine that are highlighted are just things we have to, we have to update our policy, we have to, some of the things that we do with disclosure when we borrow money.
Okay. Okay, other questions, questions or comments, anyone? So we have the motion to approve the updated compliance policy for tax exempt and tax advantage obligations and continuing disclosure. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious, thank you. Item K, review of investments, building permits, and connection and impact fees. Any questions here? Anything notable for anybody?
I've got a question about the, our investment accounts. I guess that would be for Lisa or possibly Mike, too. We've got a whole bunch of accounts at 25.5%. Is that because they're short-term or are they?
Those are all the JP Morgan accounts that we have, so they're just basically savings accounts, they're not CDs. And most of the other ones where the higher interest rates are, those are all CDs that we're locked into, so the money's not liquid.
So we're keeping money liquid for paying bills or for?
Well, what I've been doing is, with our new banking RFP, we're going to be moving the money to our new bank, which is giving us a higher interest rate than any of these other avenues, so I've been closing accounts, and they've been going up into that top area until I can move it to our new bank. Because if I left them in there for like another 12 or 18 months, because that's the normal timeframe, I, we would be losing money as opposed to putting it into the bank.
So the new bank will be getting a better rate, is that correct?
Yes.
Do you remember what it is?
It's like at the bottom there, the local government investment pool percentage.
Okay.
Plus 1.45%.
That's a lot better.
Yeah.
2.4.
So right now, it's around 4%, which is a lot more than I can get on any CD anywhere.
Right. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions on this information before us? Okay, so I'll go to item 14, reported committees, first is 14A, Planning Commission meeting from April 4, 2019, Trustee Carpenter.
So item one is discussion and possible action regarding approval of final plat for Lot 1, Highlands of Netherwood subdivision. This is planning's recommended motion. Mozon moved, seconded by Mar, to recommend approval to the village board, the approval of the final plat for Lot 1, Highlands of Netherwood subdivision. The motion was contingent on meeting the recommended conditions from Vandewell and Associates, Inc., noted in the email dated March 18th. Also, the decision regarded the material for the paved area at the end of the private drive as to be left up to the decision of the developer, and that was the unanimous motion, so I'll bring that motion forward.
I'll second. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious.
Item number two is discussion and possible action regarding approval of amended specific implementation plan for the Oregon Parks Neighborhood Edition. This was the motion coming from the Planning Commission. Mozon approved, seconded by Meyer, to recommend approval to the village board to approve the amended specific implementation plan for the Oregon Parks Neighborhood Edition. That was a unanimous motion, so I'd bring that forward.
I'll second. Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious, thank you.
Item number three, the advocates are here, so if we have questions, you can let them know. This is discussion and possible action regarding approving a conditional use permit to allow for intermediate daycare facility at 380 Walnut Street. Planning's recommendation, recommended motion was Mar moved, seconded by Carpenter to remove approval, recommend approval to the village board, the conditional use permit pursuant to section 17.31 and 17.17, parentheses, parentheses of the village code to allow for an intermediate daycare facility at 380 Walnut Street. The approval was contingent on meeting the following recommendations from village planner Vandewell and Associates in a memo dated March 27th. Number one, approval limited to Liliana Parish as the operator. Number two, approval limited to the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And number three, state of Wisconsin must approve the state permit prior to the expansion of the daycare to more than eight children. And that was a unanimous motion, so I'd bring that forward.
I'll second for discussion. Thank you. So we have the motion, second, discussion, please, questions?
Did the, the family want to come forward and tell us about their project?
Welcome.
Hello, thank you. My name's Liliana Parish, and the project is, we did an extension to our house. We add two bedrooms and living room, and so the total is three bedrooms, living room, and a full kitchen. And I currently stay licensed for the past 10 years with an in-home daycare. With, I'm allowed to have up to eight kids, so I'm trying to get the intermediate daycare that will allow me to have up to 15 kids, and I will be hiring between two and three people depending on the ages of the kids.
Are there questions for the petitioners? Anyone?
I just wanted to say I'm really excited about this because I know we need more care facilities in the community, and I know personally, we've walked past your house and have been seeing the construction going on, so it's exciting to see the project come to fruition.
And I was impressed with the thoroughness of the application that you have to go through. I mean, I thought, oh, that's interesting, I have questions, and then I read it, and I'm like, all right, well, that pretty much answered them all, so nice going.
Thank you.
Yeah, Amanda, I would like to echo that as far as when we, for conditional use permit, you know, working with Liliana and everybody, I wish, I mean, and she prepared this, you know, by going through our standards and everything like this, I wish we could get half as many applications that come in in this complete format. We really had zero revisions to it, so very well done.
Thank you.
Anything else, anyone? Okay, so we have the motion, second, to approve a conditional use permit for an immediate daycare facility at 380 Walnut Street, with some contingencies set up there. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're all set?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for sticking it out.
Yeah, thanks for your patience. Come back anytime.
We don't always have cake.
Yeah.
Good night.
Item number four, discussion and possible action regarding certified survey map for duplex at 921/923 Mary Hill Drive for Lot 159 of the Mary Hill Fifth Edition. Planning's recommended, recommended motion, Beto moved, seconded by Mozon, to recommend approval to the village board for approval of the certified survey map for the duplex for Lot 159 of the Mary Hill Fifth Edition, contingent upon comments from the village engineer and planner. So I'd make that motion for approval.
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious, thank you.
Item number five. Just see what's on the back here. All right, so this is discussion and possible action regarding approving ordinance 19-02, amending section 17.206, parentheses, three, parentheses, C, and parts of section 17-220 of the Village of Oregon Municipal Code relating to indoor institutional lands, uses, and group developments. So I'll let you know that the, the Planning Commission is bringing this forward to unanimously, recommending approval. So the first motion I will bring forward is, by two-thirds vote, I would, if we pass it, I would make a motion that we suspend the rules and waive the first and third, first and second readings at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Any question on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious.
And then my second motion is, I would make a motion that we adopt ordinance dash, or 19-02.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions, Amanda?
I do, actually. I, when I was reading through that, I, it just wasn't clear to me whether someone, if you have a large development, or large, what, what did we call it?
Group development.
Thank you. Well, but they took the word group out. It's now a large, where is it?
Large development is any development.
Is it just large development? That's, okay, so if there's a large development that's pre-existing and like in the situation where, with Academy of Sound where they're in the church now, that's a change, but they've already been through the large development process. Do they still have to go, then do they have to go through this process again because there's been a change, or once they go through it, that's it? I, I mean, because, because we, we had talked about having it so that they wouldn't need to apply for a conditional use permit in that instance.
So my understanding is they're not going to require one with this ordinance in place? And that's why, that's why I'm asking the board to adopt the ordinance tonight.
Okay, yeah, well, I, I just, it wasn't real clear from reading it, so I just wanted to be clear that, that is it based on the square footage, or just that's going to be the new process going forward?
The new process, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Any other questions? So we have motion, second, to approve ordinance number 19-02 relating to indoor institutional land uses and group developments. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious, thank you.
Item number six is discussion and possible action, amending Phase 2 specific implementation plan for Beehive Homes. They're adding two more rooms to the project. And so the motion from the Planning Commission is, I moved and seconded by Mar, that we recommend amending Phase 2 specific implementation plan for Beehive Homes, adding two more rooms to the project, contingent on comments from village planner, in a memo dated March 26th, so I would make that motion to the board.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments? Seeing none, we have motion, second, to approve Phase 2 of the SIP, adding two more rooms for, at Beehive. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious. Thank you, Jeannie. We'll go to item B, the Park Board meeting, April 3, 2019, Trustee Peterson, please.
Okay, so item B1 here is discussion and possible action regarding requesting proposal from Rettler Corporation to develop a master plan for Highlands of Netherwood Park. The Park Board's recommended motion, Knutson moved, seconded by Miller, to recommend to the village board to approve requesting a proposal from Rettler Corporation to develop the village board to approve requesting a proposal from Rettler Corporation to develop a master plan for Highlands of Netherwood Park. That motion carried 5-0 and I'll bring, make that motion tonight then.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments? So we have the motion second to approve requesting a proposal from Rettler Corporation to develop a master plan for Highlands of Netherwood Park. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
For the post, motion curious, next, item two, please.
Okay. Item two, discussion and possible action regarding Madison Community Foundation information request 2019 distribution. The park board's recommended motions, I moved, seconded by Hannibal, to recommend to the village board to request the 2019 Madison Community Foundation distribution of $729.57. A motion carried 5-0. And then, do I make these as separate or together or how do I?
You can do them together.
We can do them together.
Just do them together, okay. And then second, you know, we also said, Miller moved, Peterson seconded me, to use this money to purchase trees for the village parks.
Okay, thank you.
That also carried 5-0.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Questions or comments? So we have the motion and second to request the Madison Community Foundation distribute the $729.57 and that be used to purchase trees for village parks. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
For the post, motion curious, thank you. Item three.
Let's see. Discussion and possible action regarding the revised Adopt a Park program. Our recommended motion, Miller moved, seconded by me, to recommend to the village board to approve the Adopt a Park program contingent on village attorney reviewing the program document. And that also carried 5-0.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this? So we have a motion second to approve the Adopt a Park program, contingent upon the[1710.88]